Actually tired just a little bit. Turn the lights off. A couple of weeks ago, I was thirty years younger.
We'll go ahead and get started if there's no stand.
Father in heaven, we come now thanking you for life, health, and strength. We come to bless your name because it's the only name we've been taught, the name to be blessed. Father, we come because we love you, because we know you know all about this important state game. Father, then we ask as we go through this business of the citizens of this county, of this community, and this state, we do those things which is right. We bless your name for your goodness and your mercy again now. We pray for peace all over this land and country. Sycamore, Father, help us now as we make good decisions for our people. We thank you and we bless you again, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting this Monday, November the sixth, 2023, six p.m. We have a conference line set up. The number there is one nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two. Access code three two three four seven pound. This is not a toll free number. You may be subject to long distance charges according to your long distance plan. When the chairperson over at the meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. The moderator will unmute your live and it's your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last call business of the telephone number. Please announce your name and address and you will be allowed to speak. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comments. A commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. With that being said, I'll move to number three. Do we have approval of the agenda? We want you to take it to approve the agenda, all in favor. I think our administrator had an announcement she needed to make. If you want to go ahead and do that now?
Yes, Commissioner Feigl wanted me to announce to the board and to the public that she will not be at tonight's meeting. Her husband was readmitted to the hospital today. So she obviously will not be here tonight.
All right, we'll move on to number four, award recognition. The board to consider approval of draft resolution dedicating Taylor County Fire Station Four in memory of Mr. Charles Mincy, presented by County Administrator. It's still a resolution, so.
I move to make the read the resolution by dialing.
Do you want to read the entirety of the, just read the entirety of this?
Okay, we'll read the entirety, it's entirety.
Do you have any other motion to read the entirety of it? All right, we have a motion in a second to read the resolution.
The whole thing, the whole thing. The resolution dedicates Taylor County Fire Rescue Station Four, Icahena District, in memory of Charles Mincy for his over fifty years of dedicated service as a volunteer firefighter in Taylor County. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners have been advised that Charles Mincy has passed away, and whereas Mr. Mincy provided volunteer fire service to Taylor County for over fifty years. Whereas the lives and property of the citizens of Taylor County were made safer by his valuable service, years of service. Whereas the board wishes to publicly recognize Mr. Mincy for his many years of dedicated service to our county, and now therefore be it resolved that the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners on behalf of the citizens of Taylor County extends its appreciation and admiration to the family of Charles Mincy and recognizes countless hours of dedicated service, loyalty, and devotion to his duties over the past fifty years. Be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the Mincy family and that a copy be placed in the minutes of this forward, done and ordered in regular session at Perry-Taylor County Florida the sixth day of November, 2023.
I believe some members of his family are here. If you want them to step forward, I've explained to Chuck that once the resolution is signed and embossed, that I'll get a copy to him, or I'll get the original to him.
You can vote on the passage of it.
I'm sorry?
Vote on the passage of it.
I move.
Have a motion in a second to approve resolution, all in favor. I remember that the family here, if they want to add anything they wanted to say.
Members of the board, thank you so much for having this resolution here today and preparing for my part. It means a lot to us and I tell you, the volunteer fire service meant a lot to him. He spent countless days and nights away from home helping, not only with the actual fire crews, behind the scenes and fundraisers and trying to help all the volunteer districts afford to be able to do what they did back when they didn't have the funding that they do today. I will share with you that when he stepped out of his role before he passed, he told me how proud he was of the county and how they funded the volunteer services and how well things were moving forward. Just want to share that with you. On behalf of Mincy family, thank you.
I just want y'all to make sure on number nine that you don't have, you're on the, ten or way between ten, any of the four folks that are on that list. If you'll look at number nine and make sure that you're, that you're not a waving cousin or any of these people.
Not related.
Not related.
Okay, that's the only thing, just make sure. Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve or consent of it?
Motion.
Motion in a second to, all in favor? Public request sixteen. The board to consider approval request for funding for environmental consulting services for the Dugillo district. Presented by Michelle Curtis, Citizens Actions Task Force Chairperson.
My name is Michelle Curtis. I'm on the Citizens Actions Task Force. And I've asked Chet Thompson also to join me tonight. What we're going to share with you is a proposal for your consideration. It's a bit complex, so what I will do after we share it, I will immediately give you a hard copy of this as well so you'll have it to look at and ask further questions, okay? So as you know, the Citizens Action Task Force primary focus is to seek a potential buyer for the pulp plant. In fact, the meetings to reach out to the all industry players is happening as we speak. It will happen tomorrow as one on one and they'll be back later this week. But as a matter of pre-planning, in the event a buyer is not found and full closure of the plant is to begin in six months as GP has called the community, we, the Citizens Action Task Force, recommend that TCTA contract with an independent subject matter environmental expert to closely review permitting plans and applications and potentially make recommendations regarding the GP plans. Now, our task force recommends the firm Due Diligence Associates of Tallahassee to do the review because of the background and knowledge of one of its principals, Chet Thompson. Chet has thirty-five years of experience working at the mill site on these type of matters for the current owners, but also for Buckeye Technologies and Procter and Gamble before that. The county manager, TCTA, task force members, Swanee River Water Management District staff, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection permitting staff have discussed various approaches to get this work done. And the Swanee River Water Management District Executive Director Hugh Thomas stated that the district may be able to provide funding for these services, but would need a letter from the Taylor County Commissioners requesting that they fund this work. And this approach, and this is the key, this approach is to help ensure the best positioning for economic reinvestment or repurposing of the site, that that would be considered in the plans and permitting associated with any pulp plant closure. So this is really focused on if the plant does shut down, there is not a pulp mill buyer found, then we would be asking this, this person or this company to review proposed permitting plans such that it will enable us to still have a good setup for potential repurposing of the site. So Chet Thompson is going to share some information about the proposed scope of work and the rationale behind recommending the TCTA contract for this work.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. Commissioners, I'd like to share a few points because we've had heard questions and all, some things that, what we don't think it is, so some things that it's not. I know this is not an indication that we think that GP will not fully follow regulations because we think they will, in our experience working for them and with them and their predecessors. The companies, including GP, had clear expectations of meeting all regulations that would be fully complied with, and I'm confident they're going to do it in the future. This is not a concern that, oh, they're not going to follow regulations. This is also not a indication that we think there's some hidden environmental issue out there at the plant. Regulations require self-disclosure when the, when a site finds something. And in my time out there, it was always self-reported. And I'm confident the environmental staff out there have continued to do that. So I do not, I believe everything that is knowledge, it is the agencies, multiple agencies already have that knowledge. There's no surprise that's out there that the agencies do not know about. So I don't think that's an issue. In my experience with DEP, the Water Management District, and EPA, they're all highly professional and very focused on protecting the environment. A few points on what it is, why we think this may be a good option, is the plant's permitting framework is complex. And they're issued by multiple agencies. Just to give you a quick example, the wastewater permit is issued, which also includes the solid waste management and the groundwater monitoring, is issued by the Northeast District DEP out of Jacksonville. The water pumping is issued by the Swanee River Water Management District. The air permits are issued by the Air Division out of Tallahassee. The, the pipeline obligations around seagrass are issued by the Corps of Engineers out of Panama City with review responsibility by the National Marine Fisheries Service out of St. Petersburg. So it's, it's, it's just, and that's just a start. There's lots of people's fingers in that business out there across the board. So it's, it's complex. There, there's also that, there is, this is also an indication that permitting is with public interest. You can ask the permitting agencies. You know, there's a public interest test in all permitting. In years past, when I was the environmental manager, I often spoke to the commission and, and what was I mainly looking to was to meet, ensure that we met the permit, the, the public interest test for permitting. It is of the public's interest if a permit is issued. And so we, we think that is still the case. And so, you know, it is, there's, there's always that question. And by the way, the GP will have to permit the dismantling of the plant. They have to permit to build it. They're going to have to permit to dismantle it. And there should be some questions about the public interest when that comes up, right? This should be in the public interest. And by the way, you can ask any agency people. You represent the public interest of Taylor County. The elected officials, not the individual, they'll listen to the individual out there in the public, but they want to hear from the elected officials of the county. You represent that, that public interest. So you're the official representative, you have significant weight. I, I don't know in my years past that I realized how weighty the county commission is when it came to our permitting actions out there. So just be aware of that. This is also to say that I believe there's a Plan A. And that's the, the one that Michelle just mentioned. And by the way, that's the one I'm praying, I'm praying that Plan A works, they find a buyer, and, and you don't see me again, throw out, not in this context. But, but I also know there's a Plan C going on out there. And that Plan C is GP's plan on closure. And by the way, they talked to me about working for them on that plan, right? But I told them that I will not give them a proposal to help them on closure until I give an opportunity, can I help in providing something different? So it is my belief there will, there will may be a Plan B, I hope there is. If, if Plan A doesn't work, that will benefit from the significant environmental assets that are out there. There, there are, those permits are assets to a business, right? That infrastructure is an asset to the business. You heard Senator Scott write a letter on that here a while back. He knows that they're assets to the site out there that would continue to benefit the economic job base for the county. That's, that's the goal, right? And so frankly, within a day or two after the announcement, Taylor Brown and Michelle called me before anybody from GP or DEP contacted me. And they asked me to give them a proposal. And so that's how this started because this idea that we would, you know, we would try to leverage the significant assets and permitting if a just straight out buyer is not found. So while the proposal I provided back early, now probably five weeks ago, could be improved, it still stands. And until, until the TCTA resolves whether they would get money and employ me, I'm not going to respond to GP, I'm not going to respond to requesting DEP for, for assistance until I think if there's not an opportunity to help TCTA first, it's where the proposal is. So it's, it's after TCA does decline, I probably will still be involved, but it's going to be working for GP or it's going to be working for FDP rather than the TCTA. And I think there's a unique possibility here with the TCTA. I do, some of you know me, you know, I spent since nineteen ninety-five working on Finn Holloway River, forever it seemed like. And it was my goal that it, we resolve those issues, not because I was an environmentalist. I do believe in protecting the environment, but that wasn't it. It was for the benefit of the community that have a business that would go on for many years. And so it's still my goal that we would help have a business, some business that would help provide for the people of Taylor County. So that's still my bottom line motivation. And that's enough said, I'll open for quick questions. And I think Michelle will, will end it here. I'm sorry for taking so much time.
If I could, I'd like to pass these out to you and then, and Chet, my community questions, send them in. So what I tried to do in this handout is I underscored the items, because there's a lot of information here, but the real items, the key points. And that is that this is about closely reviewing permitting plans and applications and potentially making recommendations, okay? And it is to help ensure the best positioning for economic reinvestment should the site shut down, currently shut down coal. So it's, it's not about trying to find fault or problem with somebody or something. It is about being sure if, if the site does shut down, that its position for a new kind of business to come in and potentially use the site or potentially use some of the equipment if it's not just a pulp mill. And so what we're asking today is to have your support to send a letter to the Executive Director of the Swanee River Water Management District to request funding for this work. So I'd like to open up the questions.
Tim, I hate to put you on the spot, I'm sorry. This is Tim Alexander with Swanee River Water Management District. So just to clarify, does the Swanee River Water Management District require a letter from the Board of County Commissioners in order to fund the TCTA directly? Or does the TCTA need to make that request directly of Swanee River Water Management District?
Mr. Kevin, Mr. Board, Tim Alexander, the Director of Swanee River Water Management District. Answer your question typically, we always work with the county, is how we usually do that. I'd like to say that if we got a request from them, that we may be able to fund that as well. I do know that Director Thomas has been in contact with Michelle and Taylor. And we've had some conversation with DEP concerning this issue. Couple of different ideas were floated early on, so I just want to say I, I know she put in that letter that we made to fund it. And the thing is, we have four core initiatives, and that's water supply, water quality, natural resources, and flow protection. So we would have to work, any request we get within those parameters of what we just planned. But, you know, I'm happy to say that it could be submitted either way and we can look at it.
So funding wouldn't necessarily have to flow through the Board of County Commissioners? That's really my question. If, if the board requested funding on behalf of TCTA, would this funding go, flow directly through TCTA? Or would it have to flow through?
I would say, and from my conversation with Director Thomas, it's, it's always been considered that we would work with the county. And I have a great working relationship with the county. So, you know, that, that would be our preferred approach, not, not saying we wouldn't consider it. And also, you know, keep in mind, if that contract goes above that, that threshold amount, then you get into where it would have to be procured in all different aspects.
I understand.
Got it, your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So if we move forward with the approval of the letter, that would sound like it would need to come from us, but if the funds were awarded, would it, would it just, how would we do, how would that work?
It, it sounds like it would flow through the county, so it would be, it would go through our procurement process. And I, I don't know if the TCTA has considered a contract with, with due diligence or not, but I'm not sure if that's come before the TCTA board.
I, I don't know either. And it's just our, our committee's recommendations, okay, for yours consideration.
Right.
So, but I, I personally don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So, um.
And I think tonight, we're just asking for, quote, a letter. Because, you know, whether it comes through the county or TCTA or exactly how you procure the services or whomever you decide to procure. So that's, you know, you may think about how you want to do all that. You know, we're not really asking you to desup all that tonight, but you might, you know.
Any question, any other question from the board?
I just one question in respect to contract with due diligence and the lots of information that's with that. I guess in working with TCTA or the Board of County Commissioners, what measure of transparency would you expect in trying to communicate findings or reports or things like that with the, with the board and, and obviously with the?
Full transparency, you know, that, when I say full transparency, that, you know, that would be the, you know, one of the points is to be able to share fully with the board and, you know, through TCTA, assuming that's how, and that was the proposal we put together, went to TCTA. We could obviously change it, you know, if necessary, but it went there. And the idea would be there to be full transparency. And, you know, that's, I, I want to be clear, my experience with, when I worked for the company, there, you know, they didn't ever hide anything, but they, they managed the release of information as companies do. You know, it's, it is, it is, it wouldn't be an automatic, you know, wouldn't be automatic sharing with the board if I end up working for the company. If I'm working for TCTA and the board, it would be an automatic recommendation and sharing. Yeah.
Just understanding that investment of, of public dollars into the Board of County Commissioners or TCTA obviously would, would?
Sunshine.
Absolutely.
Sunshine.
Yeah, and that's?
That means that you advertise when your meetings are, you know? That's one thing you need to think about because when you're dealing with public funds, you're under government and sunshine.
True.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to be sure of that.
No, no, that's, you know, that's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a valid, a valid point, I guess. In, in our mind, we have thought that that, you know, given a closure process, it would be, and you all are representing that interest of what's, what's going to happen in the county here. It would be, it would be good to make sure things are happening in sunshine. So.
Yes, sir. From what I understand, you asking, Michelle asking tonight, first is going to count a letter to Swanee River Management District with the possible supporting, what, what do you mean?
Okay, so I'm going to draw you through the first page.
Go ahead.
Okay, because it, because of all of the talk, it is sometimes confusing. And in the first paragraph, it's underlined.
Yeah.
It is to recommend a contract with an independent subject matter environmental expert to closely review permitting plans and applications and potentially make recommendations regarding GP plans.
Okay. That's what that letter should be stating, and that's what we should?
And not, and not may, or, or even due diligence at this point, if that's correct.
Right, right. It's just about?
That's a request of the letter, the eight port.
Yeah.
That's what we are recommending.
Yeah.
The reason we recommended TCTA is because this really does relate to repurposing the site and bringing in new business. So that's why we thought of TCTA, okay?
If Bob comes back this Friday and says we got a buyer, then we can put this off the aside, right?
But I guess also understanding that with this request for the TCTA process moving forward, do they have the same procurement? forward, do they have the same procurement process in respect to contracting with due diligence? Or can, can, can they move forward without going through what the county would be requiring?
I don't know that they have the same requirements. Now, that, that I don't know. They may be able to operate differently than the board would. And just to your point, I think we need to understand if we send a letter to Swan River Water Management District, then I think, and if Swan River Water Management District funds it, which they may not, because I don't believe economic development is one, is that correct, Tim? Is one of their core missions, but if they were to fund it, then not only would we have to follow our procurement policies, but then the contract would be with the board and with due diligence for environmental consulting work, which is not necessarily in our wheelhouse. And also, our, our liability policy has exclusions for environmental activities. And it's, it's broad, so I don't know that it would apply, I mean, that's a, that's a question. So.
That's what it was having to manage it all the way through, being involved.
I would think so.
Would that mean the best thing to do is to go with the recommendation of the group? I mean, the recommendation is a TCDAs contract with due diligence.
Well, but if TCDAs is asking for funding assistance, suits Swan River Water Management District, I don't know, I just want to be transparent, that I don't know that that would be a possibility.
I'm not, I'm not countering Tim, because he is right there.
Right.
You know, and so maybe, maybe, but when, you know, Director Thomas talked to Michelle and, and Taylor, you know, he said, I think we can fund some things, but rightfully, he says, I want to know that the people of Taylor County, represented by these folks, are behind it. So we, it was almost not a request that seemed like he was asking for, he was asking just a, a declaration of support. Now, I don't know how that lines up with what Tim has had, but that was the original kind of request, is we, we want to know that the people of Taylor County is represented by the commissioners behind this idea.
Sure.
Yeah.
I agree with that statement, but, but again, I think at the beginning, some of the things that were considered to be looked at may not have failed just in the wheelhouse of economic development. That's why I wanted to make sure that we, you understand, we would only fund something that followed within our core mission.
I understand, yes, I understand.
So it would sound like the TCDAs may be better to TCDAs send a letter of support from them, because, I mean, that would almost bypass the procurement process that we'd have to go through, right?
I think if the TCDAs wanted to consider this and, and request the funding directly from Swan River Water Management District, that they met, that may be a simpler process with, you know, with the disclosure that it may not be funded if it's considered economic development activities. Does that make sense?
The only thing I'd say on the economic development piece, I think it's all still about only protection of the environment, et cetera, et cetera, but such that however it's closed, it could still be potentially developed in the future.
Yes. There's still would be the chance of funding in respect to, to the actual request, in that what your company will be doing is reviewing the plans and applications for that potential future use. But it is environmentally related and directly connected to the purpose, which.
Absolutely.
Might connect us back to the water management problems.
Michelle?
Yes, please, Dan.
Dan, some of us remember the task force, and as listening to this, I wonder if there's some way we could marry all this up. We're talking about TCDAs. Water Management District wants this public statement on behalf of the community. Is it possible, I'm just thinking out loud, the county commission could write a letter saying we support this, would you fund it through the TCDAs? They would have the weight of the county commission behind them, the public, but then it may, it may flow through the sub organization. They would have the strength of the public sentiment from this commission.
That, that is what Mr. Thomas was asking, is he wanted to know, he, he was like, hey, I'd like to do this, but I want to know that this group is behind, is aligned, that we're not going counter to what the leadership of the county is doing. That, that was his statement.
Let me say that. I, I am for doing what we need to do. When you got 1,200 people sucking, I'm over.
Right.
You know, then you take 1,200 people out of this county, we got ghosted. Now, dude, I am particular about when we are signing, what we are signing, how we are signing, okay? We have, well, council there, council could, you gotta give us some guidance on that? They asked you for a letter of support, I'm willing to give some support as far as it can go, but if anything else come up, then I need to, we need to bring it back through the commission.
Send a letter of support for the TCDAs effort to hire due diligence in this facet.
And if Water Management wants another letter from y'all, then you fall back and decide whether you want to write, write a letter. Tim, you following me?
Yes, sir.
So do, so would the request need to come from TCDAs after they consider this, this request? Would they need to consider the request and then come back to the board and ask for a letter of support? I, I'm wondering if we're putting the card before the horse, if TCDAs hasn't considered this request as of yet, and I don't, I'm not sure that they have.
I'm not sure what the TCDAs is with this, I mean, have you guys spoken with the TCDAs?
I certainly have spoken with Taylor Brown, I do not know, I, I don't believe they've actually taken this up as any of their members, but I don't know that for sure.
I don't believe so, I don't believe so, but I think they have a meeting coming up shortly, maybe.
Is it before the next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They should.
So i- if they were to meet on this subject matter, and then we could have some directives on their thoughts.
I think we're all in support of what you're, the initiative trying to do, I think it's about doing it the right way.
Kind of what Dan said, maybe even something from the county, but also asking the request to go through the TCDAs, the funding to go through the TCDAs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Constitutional officers and other governmental units, they send a thing to the door to two members of the Board of County Commissioners, one member and one alternate to the Taylor County Cambacing Board for the 2024 election cycle, adjourned by Brad Fuddman, our supervisor there.
Good evening. 133 days before the next election. Just in case you were wondering.
That sounds interesting.
I'm here tonight to ask for the appointment of a member to the cambacing board, and as you all are aware, I need a member served, and then I need a member as an alternate. As you're considering that appointment, remember it does need to be a county commissioner who is not scheduled to appear only in 2024 ballot. So I know that does limit.
Inanimate.
A few of you. That takes, yeah, District 1, 3, 5, so that leads to and 4.
Sound like me.
You want to be the member or the alternate?
I'd be the alternate, be fine. And, and Ms. Fiegel would have to be the.
The member?
That's your appointment.
Either way, I'd be. Go ahead, do either way.
I think at this point, we've worked with all of you, so.
I'm second to motion, if I'm able. I've got a motion, second to Mr. Fiegel to be our member for the cambacing board, and Commissioner Moody to be our alternate, all in favor?
Thank you.
Governor Nicholas Warren, American Civil Liberties Union Foundation's staff attorney to discuss Reed District, District 8 in Taylor County.
Good evening, commissioners, good to see you all again. I've been summoned back here to talk about this more. To recap, districts are out of whack. Constitutional parameters say that 10% difference between the smallest and largest district is constitutionally permissible, above 10%, presumptively invalid. Taylor County's found itself because of population shifts over the decade at almost 50%, at 48, so that's almost five times over the legal limit, so to speak. And it's not unusual, it's obviously through no fault of the board or anyone else, but from time to time, you know, looking at the map, see what can be changed, can be updated, and brought back in line with the Constitution. So here to answer any more questions y'all have, take any direction, or provide any advice y'all need. And also should introduce some of my colleagues who are here with me from Tallahassee and Jacksonville, Abdullah Skier, Matt Willembeum, and Joe Diver, all on our voting rights team as well.
Is this a new map?
And that's up to you. This is the concept map that, that I drafted just to show that it's possible.
Is it even at the number, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So that's within how close it is?
Within, definitely within 10%. And I would expect, so that's actually on, what do I feel how printed out? Okay, it's, it's attached to the, the letter from the spring, and it looks like the largest district is at plus 3.8, and the smallest is minus 3.5, so that's under 8%.
Within your range?
What's that, sir?
That's within your range?
Yes, sir, within 10%.
What page do you own, then?
That is the second to last page, or the last page of the letter from, but that's, that may not be in the presentation from last workshop.
I don't know that it is. This is, what we have displayed is the conceptual map. If we bring up the presentation.
It, no, the, the numbers may not be in the presentation, but, but I can read them out to you or, or send them over, but that was in the letter, the original letter that, that we sent last night.
Is there any room for adjustment on those particular boundaries? I mean, I was asked by several residents about that attention.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean.
How we would arrive at that, please.
Yeah, there, there are a million ways to draw a map, which may make it sound harder, like a harder exercise than it is. But yes, absolutely, there's wiggle room in there. This is just one, again, a concept to show that it's possible to change it within the constitutional parameters. But if, if the board wanted to perceive this as a starting place and tweak it and discuss changes between different districts, that is definitely doable.
Wait, so, but to me, that the way it's going now is illegal, so to get it, we have to adjust it to make it legal, is that what you?
Yes, sir, that the, the board's existing map that has been used.
Who, who come up with this illegal part of?
Well, that kind of happens naturally over time as the population changes, right? When it was drawn 35 years ago, it was, that was based on the 1980 census. People move, you know, people move out, people move in, et cetera, and, and the districts just become unequal in population, and all of a sudden, you know, one person, one vote principle's no longer in place.
In respect to this conceptual, is there a, a copy of the existing?
Yes, so the, the light, those, the colors are the concept map, and the light black line, or kind of darker black lines over it is the existing map, which is on the, the side there. So the, they should look, hopefully look familiar to you. But yes, so, so where the color, where the colored districts align with the black line, that would be, the line hasn't changed. And then where you see areas of color, like north of Perry, there's the portion of District 2 that is in this map moved into District 4, in between 221 and 1927, and that would be an area of difference. So there are some, I mean, there's some areas that definitely change in this map more than others, especially around District 5 and Perry, and then some that just needed some tweaks. District 3, which is, I think, the largest, the most overpopulated district, is in the one that folks are kind of the most underrepresented, is in they, their vote counts have punches the least compared to others, has to shrink, as an example, which is why it loses those stretches down on the west side of Keaton Beach Road and north of Holy Road.
So the basic, if I'm reading that correctly, the beach road and Highway 27 is that boundary border?
Yeah, yeah, for District 3?
Yes, sir.
So it goes down 27 and then, and then cuts across to 1998 on Holy Road and Mixon Road, and then.
Awesome. So it's actually south of Highway 27.
Yes.
For some reason.
Yes, sir.
I had to get my binoculars out.
And we may be able, we may be able to zoom in on any portion. This would be definitely.
We can work on that.
I think we're working on getting some high quality print blow up maps, maybe.
If, if I could interject, I spoke with Commissioner Fiegel earlier today, and she's asking if we could try to print some maps that show much more detail, some large maps, so y'all can actually go to the street level and perhaps review those in a workshop. So in an upcoming workshop, if we can find a way to print large, large copy maps that, that show a greater amount of detail. I'll, I'll have to get staff involved to see if there's a way to overlay this utilizing our GIS. That's really the only way I know to do that.
For printed, yeah, and that would definitely be helpful to see. This link, this is just Google Maps with these overlaid, this is a public link, hopefully it should be in the materials from last workshop. But I can share again, and you can zoom in and zoom out and scroll over any part of the county that you want. Tackle on and off the existing map lines to seem clear. But yeah, this is, again, concept map is the title, because it's just a, it's just a proof of concept.
I asked Mr. Look, the one, to bring that back up and to put it on the agenda, because I thought you said you only had so much time to do this before the next election. And the one that I, that was in that packet, I couldn't get, I couldn't get my streets and all together. I need a bigger map and much cleaner, so I can show it to my constituents, and everybody could see what it is. That gray layer is what scares everybody, you know, again, so you can't really match them with water.
Do we want to look at it at the workshop at the end of the month?
What is the time period that we're looking at? Because I know we don't have a workshop typically in December, and I just want to make sure that we have enough time to, to actually get some maps presented before the next workshop. What is our deadline?
Yeah, so the legislature made it really easy. There is a, a drop dead date that, after which you cannot pass a new map, which is February 8th. So that's coming up soon. That being said, there, if you don't pass, if the, if the board doesn't pass a map, like I said, technically this map right now is in violation of the voter constitution. So state statute, U.S. Constitution, I'll do that one for Mr. Bishop, maybe, but, but to advise on what, you know, you'd be empowered to do. There's also the development consent decree, which allows, actually, we worked with another county that technically passed its map after the deadline about a year and a half ago. And they submitted the, the new map, which I think would have to happen in Taylor as well. If you pass a new map, it'll have to be added as an amendment to the development consent decree, because that's a court order that's ordering the county to use this map. And I think the federal court wouldn't have any problem saying, we're amending this consent decree, and you're allowed to use your new map regardless of what the legislature says the deadline is. That's what happened in, I can't off the top of my head remember which county it was, but.
Jackson.
Jackson. Yes, Jackson. A year and a half ago, that's what, that's what they did, and no one complained, and we missed you.
As you're saying, if this is adopted by.
As you're saying, if this is adopted by the February date, then that would be the lines for the upcoming 24 arrests.
Correct.
But also in compliance with the requirements?
Well, I'd like you to tell them, my client, the board, the process. You know, they understand the, you know, the line drawing and trying to figure out what it is. But what process does the board have to do in being in compliance with notice and those sub-type of things? If you can just give them an overview of that.
So, that's a good question. That is not quite my area of expertise, but I know there's at least a one-meeting notice requirement, I think. Or there's a publication requirement, but, yeah. In other, truth be told, in other counties, it hasn't seemed like incredibly formal and lengthy.
Well, do you have somebody at your office that could write out a, not a program, but a listing of what we need to do to effectuate and get this done prior to February the 9th? And just send it to Luanda and me?
Sure.
Their expertise.
Sure.
Because that's just as important as drawing lines. You know, we don't want to drop the lines and not give the public the opportunity to be heard in a public forum, so to speak.
In recent, just finished up the process in Bradford County for both the school board and county commission. They had a series of joint workshops where all 10 board members were discussing, and there were tweaks to maps that went on for maybe two meetings before there was kind of a meeting of the minds, and then everyone was happy. And then after that, at that last workshop where there was a consensus agreement, and also a chance for every member of the public to come back after they had seen an initial draft map. The boards went to their separate meetings, and the next meetings, it was adjourned as a resolution, and each of them separately had a formal vote on that map that they had agreed to. That was all, that all, between the agreeing on the map and the passing of a resolution at a meeting, you know, happened maybe two weeks or three weeks. So there's a publication requirement, I believe, either before or after the final vote. But it's definitely the kind of thing that could be done through a series of meetings from now to February 8th.
Some counties, are they commissioned for countywide? How does that affect that in any way?
They, it's actually, well, so Michael Fay and Dixie are, they, they don't have to worry about this on the, when people go to vote time, because they're elected countywide. But they have the residency areas that still have to be redrawn from time to time. So certain people, like, there's still a C1, C2, C3, and you have to live within the boundaries of the zone. And those are tweaked from time to time, the same state statute that says that they have to be equal in population applies. But the voters just don't know when they go to vote, because everyone's doing it countywide.
The next workshop, is that what we want to look at?
Yes, it sounds like what we need to do. So we have plenty of time to get this accomplished.
I'd love your map.
We have a workshop on the 28th, end of the month.
It's already on my calendar. Yes, and we have, and? Yeah, I think we'll work on that before that time. Also, if there's, in the meantime, if there's any particular information that you think is important about this proposal, about other alternatives or areas that you think should be in the same district, in a different district, to be thinking about those, obviously, and ready. I can be certainly prepared to live map with a computer, either this one or one of them, and so we can all see on the screen. And again, try to have kind of a meeting of the minds as quickly as we can. And I'll also say, I believe I'll be presenting to the school board, or one of, some combination of my colleagues who are here will be if I'm out over the next month, possibly as soon as their next workshop, next week. So hopefully they'll be up to speed. I know there's some school board members who attend this, so we'll talk to you.
I know we got one getting it. Do you have a schedule?
A schedule?
Yeah.
For the school board?
Yeah.
I know we're talking about 14th, next Tuesday, but I don't think that's been set in stone yet. Thank you.
Attorney Allen. We got, please, the board, we got a letter from Ramona. And it's essentially that we don't have to do anything if we want to stay in with regard to the settlement on this particular one. I don't know whether Luanda tells you, but we did get a notice for the settlement of the, a good deal of money, did we not? Not from this one, but from another one? $159,000.
Right, and so that's administered from this by the state, and I will be setting up a meeting with that agency. And also, hopefully, within the next week, we'll get the final piece of the settlement with the Walmart settlement. And I think Mr. Ramona said that, you know, we've been kind of holding off as far as an expenditure plan, because I don't know how much the total is. So we should get that up soon.
Well, I just remembered that when this thing started, and I said, you know, they came to us and said, you know, this is a class action. And I was thinking, well, should we do it, or shouldn't we do it? Now, but, you know, money's money, and if it becomes, and if it helps people get off the opioid, then y'all have done, y'all have passed. That's a good deal of amount of money for helping people get off the drugs. So my recommendation is to do nothing and wait for the settlement.
Okay.
Pursuant to what Mr. Ramona said. We don't need to, we don't need to vote on anything right here tonight. We don't need to vote on anything right now?
No. Not a, not a.
Grand Administrator Adams, 21, the board to consider waiver of FEMA housing permitting fees through December 2023, adjourned by county administrator.
So we had some communication with FEMA. They're asking to, or they will be, setting up probably a half a dozen FEMA trailers within the county for votes who will be, are displaced from the hurricane. And they're asking for a waiver of those fees only for the folks who will be receiving the FEMA temporary housing. And so it's about $400 per unit. And again, it's around a half a dozen, but I do need the board to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve on a favor. 21, the board to consider approval of letter requesting waiver of MACH to the Economic Development Administration for the preparation of short and long-term recovery plans, adjourned by county administrator.
So as I told the board earlier, we've, I've been working with the Regional Planning Council to request a preparation of a short term and a long term financial recovery plan that's related to the closure of the mill. We had a conference call with the Florida Economic Development Representative for the US Department of Commerce. And they, so actually, my question is two-fold. Would the board support the, a grant application that the Regional Planning Council would make on our behalf? And will you also agree to the request of the MACH for board commissioners? There's typically a 10% MACH, and they have agreed to consider waiving that on our behalf, under the circumstances.
Now, since I remember the planning council, I can't vote, or I have to let them know that I'm?
Yeah, and there it's your financial.
Not mine.
Doesn't help you financially at all. You're good to vote.
Okay.
We get a motion to approve the waiver?
So? The request for the waiver?
Motion to approve.
The request in the waiver?
Motion in a second to approve the letter requesting a waiver, on a favor? 22, the board to consider the affirmation of the county administrator selection for the building official position planned vacancy.
After almost 26 years of service, our current building official, Danny Greiner, has made the decision to retire mid-December. So we advertised for applications for this position. We received several applications, and after interviews were held, Mr. Earl Kettering was the highest scoring applicant. Mr. Kettering has 27 years of experience in the construction industry, and has also served on the planning board for 15 years. He's been approved to take the test for his provisional license, which is one of the requirements, requirements for standard certification for building official. Due to Mr. Kettering's vast experience in construction and planning, I feel he meets the qualifications to satisfactorily perform the duties as the county building official, and I respectfully request affirmation from the board.
Motion. Motion to approve on a favor.
Thank you.
County administrator to discuss informational items.
So as a reminder, November 10th at noon is our Veterans Day luncheon. It will be held at Forest Capitol Hall. If you have not made arrangements to serve or whatever role you'd like to play, please reach out as soon as possible. Also, first, will you display the image? If you'll recall, at a previous meeting, Mr. J.T. Davis came to the board and asked for permission to paint a mural at Hampton Springs Park. And the board approved that, but asked to see a design. So this last weekend, he had students from, and the art teacher, go out, and they basically just painted an outline of the mural they wished to paint. Just because it was part of the wish from the boards to see what they actually wanted to paint. So I just wanted to, for y'all to see what their vision is. And he said that they would have maybe some characters in costume. He wanted that to be a mystery. But I just wanted you to see the designs that they wished to paint and make sure that it meets your, it's not agenda, but just to make sure that you have consensus that this is satisfactory.
Any questions from the board on this?
Last item, November 21st is our next scheduled meeting, which I realized last week is Thanksgiving week. So my question is, do you, do you wish to hold that meeting on the 21st, or do you want to consider moving it to the 28th, which would be after Thanksgiving?
Better for me. What you got? But we have a workshop on that day.
Do you know if we have any bit openings or public hearings for the 21st? I couldn't think of any. I don't think we have any. I don't think so. Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Do you get a motion to combine these?
Well, it's not agenda. Can we just, can we just have consensus from the board to move the meeting? Okay.
We can have a workshop and also?
Right.
Have your workshop first and then your regular meeting.
Whichever makes the most connection. Yes, I would be, to pull one.
Vote for the meeting.
Well, I'll just circle back around with you, and we'll look at what the agenda looks like, and because that will be the workshop for redistricting. So we need to take that into consideration. Okay, so we can just move the meeting to the 28th?
But then you would follow with another meeting, the Monday they're at, would the first one be Sunday?
Yes. We actually have two meetings in December, so it would be whatever.
So it looks like that Monday would be the fourth?
Yeah.
Which would be less than a week apart. Very good. So you'd say? Oh, well, I had to get my math glasses out. I can see district lines over there, I'm cute, I don't see those.
Now, that means also the reorganization meeting.
The 28th?
Right.
Yeah, or what, now they're 28th, yes, that would be reorganized on time.
Yeah, I hadn't, I don't know what's in the policy, in the board's housing for that. I have to look at that.
I think it's?
First or the second meeting in November, didn't?
Is it tight?
Does it stipulate a date?
I think it's ours. It's the board's decision to reorganize, I guess.
And we need to take this into consideration for the next calendar and not try to schedule a meeting during Thanksgiving week, because we went through this last year. I believe, and I think the only time it's an issue is after a general election.
Oh, yeah.
Remember, which we don't have this year. Right. So is that correct, Conrad, so it wouldn't be an issue this year?
Well, we're gonna say it's not an issue.
So you will say we're doing reorg meeting on the 28th, unless you find otherwise, we need to do something different. So you want the meeting, and then the workshop for reorganization? Either way.
You need to determine who's just gonna go first. We'll figure out.
Come in, Attorney Allen. Comment to the third, somebody public for non-admitted. Any other questions? Go ahead, Kelly. Can I ask and do something? If you'll just come up, make your name and address.
Well, I was hoping somebody else would take it, but. It's group of people, for the most part, my neighbors. I've been there longer than most of them.
What's your, uh?
My name is Joe Elman Jr. And my address is 3646 Isaiah Drive. And I built my house in 1980. This is a map of Isaiah Drive. It starts at Shaw Cemetery Road. It runs all the way to my property line, and as far north as you can go. It was laid out along with Isaiah Drive by C.A. Lewis. He wanted to distribute his property to Doris's sisters, and he gave them, laid out, gave them pick of what they wanted. And he divvied the whole road, Isaiah Drive, all the way to my property line. It's no better path to load. And we have commercial traffic all the time. We have delivery services, Walmart delivery, mosquito control, comes all the way down to the end. I have had problems in the past, because when you get to my property line, Luca says, you can come through my property, and through this fair and this property, and cross the creek where there's no bridge, and get to Highway 221. But I've never told anyone, because that's a private road, and as far as I know, nobody else has ever told a private road, they gave the whole road to the county. And when we had this hurricane, the people from his possession came out there and to help us clean up. He said they were instructed by the county just to take the debris to the road, and that's where it is now. And it would be picked up there. So that's what happened. And I don't know why they didn't get paid, nobody asked me when the, I guess it was the county figured. It wasn't necessary for seven people who lived down the garden road to have paid. I don't think any of those was wanting. We still pay our taxes. We're in a rock and hard place, because? We're in a rock and hard place because you say it's a private road and you won't service it. All you got to do is look at the maps. Now, this is an old one and it shows on the old ones that it's, that it's your road, it was given to you when it was laid out, that's a utility. If you tell FEMA that the truth, then there shouldn't be any problem with them picking it up on public road.
Now, what the concern is, is the debris pickup?
Yes, debris pickup. And we're caught as rock and hard place because even if we could take it to roll-off sites, you wouldn't accept it there because they say just take it to the, to, to your road and it'll be picked up there, you know, and so that's what we did, what we were told to do, by the roll-off site people, by the, the people who came to help us, the Baptist Disaster Relief, they were told by the county, send it to the road, it'll be picked up there and that's what was done.
This, you just read a private or a county?
So is that, so no part of the Azalea Road or Azalea Drive is on the private road list? I reached, I only found out about this just shortly before the meeting as far as the details, so I reached out to FDOT and asked them if they could help clarify what happened with that particular road and the monitoring company for FDOT is stating that where the pavement ends is where county maintenance ends, so therefore they did not allow pickup past that, but what I cannot determine or couldn't determine today is that small section that is not paved to where the ownership lies because when I checked the property appraisers' map, it has no label on it, so I think I just need to do some research so I can report back to FDOT, you know, this is, this is either owned by the county or it's considered a private road, but no portion of that is on the, is on the list as far as the non-county maintenance road that we submit it.
It's not, you don't maintain it, but, uh, but it was, it was divvied, my, my, my plant, this is, this is, I couldn't find my original plant, this one was the one that was my father-in-law's, Bill Brown, he lives on, lived on the same road at the time, but he shows no break from Charlotte Cemetery all the way down to my property line, there's no break in the road, there's no, it, it was all laid out at one time, the utilities were all put in at one time, you know, and it was, matter of fact, it was all, the houses were built on it within five years, you know, everybody built the same time because he was building for his sister-in-law's, the Doris sisters, and he was building for Henry, one friend, he got an ex-ordination, and he was, and he was building for two of his preachers. He was building one, he, he sold one to Jerry Green because she decided she liked one uptown, so Jerry said, hey, I got a contract with C.A., would you like to buy this for me if he'll, if he'll sell the contract to me? I said, great, Jerry, I love it. And I bought it and finished paying off the C.A. and built my house in nineteen eighty-nine, I've been there ever since, it's always been a public road. If you can get paid, but you're not gonna paint the street for seven people, I guess, you didn't want to.
We just need to do a little research.
I think you just need to make it right, that's what's right, it's not a public road. Now, if you come down the road, if you come down the road to the end of it.
It's not a private road. The sign is green.
You're going, I tell you that you can come through my private property and this parish private property and you can cross the creek on a non-existent bridge and get the two twenty-one. I've had to turn people around in our property line, but we have deliveries all the time, it's not a public, it's not a private road, I never asked them.
We've got some other private, got some other, you know, issues with the private roads and trying to get that top pickup.
I don't think they have a problem with FEMA, once they, you know.
It's not up to FEMA, let me just, let me just explain.
It's a full requirement transportation.
Okay, it's not FEMA's determination, it's DOT's determination and the determination was made that they would only remove debris from county maintained roads and that's what we are trying to resolve with them. We're not the only county in this predicament, we sent a letter two weeks ago to the DOT secretary, we're trying to work through it with our legislators, so it's not, they, they're, they are stating they only wish to remove debris on county maintained roads, so we are trying to resolve this with DOT and with the legislature to get funding so they can complete the project.
Well, there are plenty of roads in the county that are still dirt, you know.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
That's our, that's our only fault right there, this is dirt.
Well, I think that, I think what is maybe, the question is, according to our county maintained road list, that portion that we maintain ends at the pavement, that's why there's the question and so I just have to be able to, to show them that it's under county ownership and I, I don't think there's gonna be an issue, but I need a little bit of time to resolve it.
And we have a green sign.
Yes, I understand.
If it's a private, it's a road.
Well, it's only because it's a portion of it is what they're saying, there is a green sign, but there's a portion of that road that is not county maintained is what they're saying because it's dirt, so that's what I'm trying to clarify.
We still have mosquito control.
I understand, I understand.
Down the road.
Correct.
Thank you. We just, we just mainly wanted, because we had heard so many different things, we just needed clarification, I talked to Pam for a long time this morning and that's what we just needed clarification because they, they were hit and missed, they came down and started taking some and then just disappeared.
Well, that's because the monitoring.
It took all of them.
The monitoring company stopped them and said, this portion is not county maintained, so you cannot remove debris and I found out about it this afternoon and I will, I will try to resolve it.
As long as somebody's doing something.
I thought that was our main thing.
Can I ask a question, why is the sign green if it's not my county maintained? Because I own some property right on down the street, and it's a blue sign there, going into the property, does that tell me it's a private property and I know it's a private property because I own it?
I doubt that there would be two signs on one road, so I, I don't.
It should be blue though, if it's not, if it's not.
Well, my, what I'm trying to say is the majority of the road is county, is maintained and that's probably why the sign is green, I don't think that we would put a blue sign on the other end, on a portion of the road that isn't county maintained, but that, they're not necessarily going by the green or blue signs, they're going by the parameters that are on our county maintained road list.
If I would see the, so the, it's so high because I think that's where the worst tornado struck down, right here in that area.
They sent me pictures today. Yes, I saw pictures.
It's so high, you can't even see the neighbor's house and the neighbor, she lost her house, two trees fell through her house, right, she's like tearing down and rebuild, so it's terrible over there.
I understand.
They will look into it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Bill Brian, one zero zero five East Marguerite, the last being spelled.
Was that address Bill?
One zero zero five East Marguerite. Item twenty-two is what I'm reading, no. Yeah, item twenty-two, I understand Danny's retiring in December, did you say?
Yes.
The present building inspector is not qualified to fill that position.
I don't believe so, and he did not apply for it.
Has Earl got the qualifications that Danny has to fill that building official position?
He has the qualifications that are required to fill that position.
He does, so I can come up wherever I need to go and I can get a copy of those licenses that Danny's got, you're telling me Earl's got those licenses?
I don't believe he has, he has two years to obtain the provisional license according to what we understand, so he's been approved to take the test for his provisional license and we still have an inspector.
Well, I'm not concerned about the inspector, I'm concerned about building official. When you have to have somebody to approve plans and, you know, the next step up, we just need to be careful, we will be in a big mess.
Are you, are you concerned as far as the city contracting with the?
I'm concerned of the city and the county.
Okay.
Not having a qualified building official. Just, you know, if they allow it, but who's gonna sign those things, plans?
It would be the current building official.
Until for two years?
No, sir, it would be the, it would be who we hire to be the building official.
So he's gonna be able to sign, I thought that Earl, Earl can sign those plans for two years?
That's my understanding, he has two years to obtain his provisional license. The city could certainly hire your own building official.
I understand that, but we got a contract and we need to be, and my concern is, of course, that next step up, I don't understand how, I know, understand, you know, you got time to do it, but I don't understand how a non-qualified person can.
That's my understanding of it.
Plans.
That's my understanding of the way the statute reads.
You ready to check? Yes, because we can, we can be in deep trouble.
Well, again, now if the city wishes to hire your own building.
No, I have absolutely no concern about that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm talking about the county being able to have a non-qualified person that can sign the plan, you know, sign off on plans and all, Mr. Newey, that?
Yeah, it's been twenty-eight years since Danny was hired.
The last party in the conference.
Can you be quiet? If I recall correctly, now, I'm saying this, this is not the gospel, you understand that now, I think we did the same thing with Danny when he was hired, it was provisional.
Right.
Until such time as he was.
That was at that time.
Well, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish, I'm gonna ask with the board's permission to check and see if that's the case today with regard to the statute, let's take the statute and make sure we're okay so we can satisfy Mr. Brian's, see if we're right, simple, okay, simple, and if we're not right, then we need to decide.
What we're doing there.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
All right. Go with the question, Mr. Bill.
No, I've talked to, the most calls I have about free removal on private roads, county maintained roads and we tried to head because somebody moved some trash and others did. Don't stop there. She got it under control.
Mr. New?
I've been asked by a lot of people about the private roads too and I've told them exactly what I was told to tell them, put it out there on that road and sooner or later some kind of way it'll be picked up and who's gonna pay for it in the end, who knows, now, it's just a toss-up, but I think we'll get support for this over with, get it all done by April, appeal it, pretty good.
I've had some same, let me know, same issue of asking some of the citizens to, or tell them to put it in the right way, like some of the monitoring work crews come by and tell them to leave it on their side of the, right away out of the ditch and I move it probably more because their arm not able to reach into the dits and they'll tell them they're gonna come around and get it and then they come back and tell the citizens that.
Kind of tongue-in-mouth.
Coming on private property, so I had to tell them to push it in the ditch, so that that's where we're going to put it anyway, so.
On, on DOT's property. I told them, probably some of the same people, push it out there in that ditch and let DOT work with it.
That's what, so anyway, all I have, so.